It's eleven thirty now.
Yeah, you can press the button.
Okay.
If you would please. And with that, I'll launch into welcoming the Minister for Children and Housing and his team to the quarterly hearing with the Environment Housing Infrastructure Scrutiny Panel. And kick off with questions regarding the Government Plan 2023, which we understand will be revised in the light of the COVID-19 pandemic. And of course, now is likely to become a recovery plan. The impact on Jersey's public finances will require consideration of how available public resources should best be prioritised, allocated and used. What steps, Minister, are you taking to reprioritise the available public resources for allocation and use within the department under your remit? For instance, you've got some, your department's individual budget and its feasibility, which includes the viability and deliverability of projects within your departments. What are your thoughts on that?
And so, so you're absolutely right in that the government plan, which will be presented towards the end of this year, will probably look reasonably different to what we were anticipating had this crisis not occurred. And having a focus in it on recovery, economic stimulus, getting the island back on its feet and to a position of strength for our community will obviously be a significant theme in that government plan. And so the discussions on exactly what that's going to look like haven't really begun as of yet. I think the focus on the discussions so far have been about, I think more about the process of how we're going to put that government plan together, timelines, et cetera. And I know scrutiny have been consulted on some of that as well. So some of the nitty gritty in terms of what's going to happen to this project, which was determined by the last part of the government plan. You know, will, will things have to be moved? Will some of the costings have to change? Will some stuff be scrapped altogether? Are obviously the big questions that ministers will be arguing over, over the coming months. And I use the word arguing because there probably will be some arguing over prioritisation of some of these things. And from a political perspective, I have no hesitation in making the point that the State's Assembly agreed that reducing income inequality and improving the standard of living for islanders was going to be one of our key priorities for this term of office. And I don't believe that enough progress was made on that priority before this crisis hit. And therefore, after this crisis, it must be sort of, I think, put up the agenda a bit more. And housing is a fundamental part of that. And so I'm not willing to shift ground on certain parts of our programme, which I think will be fundamental to that recovery. And I'll be making the case to other ministers for that.
Thanks. It's all a question of making perhaps a revised plan fit whatever budget we may have, I suspect. And I wouldn't disagree. And in fact, I'd be interested to, to leading into the Ireland Plan could be delayed due to COVID-19. And I wonder how that affects plans to fulfil the findings in the Objective Assessment of Housing Need Report, establishing the number size and tenure of new homes required in Jersey from twenty-one to thirty. And it would be interesting to hear, maybe Andy would tell us what the thinking is with regard to changes that might be, might be necessary in terms of standard of housing, which we perhaps learnt in the last two months, which will maybe alter the direction of travel in the Ireland Plan. Andy?
Yeah, certainly. So in terms of the Ireland Plan as a whole, the Ireland Plan will, I believe, still be an Ireland Plan, sorry, a government plan priority moving forward. The current Ireland Plan effectively comes to the end of its life at the end of 2021. And in reality, was based on work that was approved by the Assembly in 2011 and then started in 2009. So some of the thinking behind the Ireland Plan is arguably out of date now. It does need refreshing. I think the, the challenge on that plan is exactly the same as the challenge on the government plan, is that we need to refresh it within a, within a timescale of this government and this Assembly. But also now deal with recovery within that as well. I think housing delivery still is a very important part for the Ireland Plan to deal with. The housing pressures the island are facing and is facing hasn't, haven't gone away. And if anything, have magnified in certain areas. So housing delivery is certainly still a very key part of that. We certainly do anticipate the Ireland Plan continuing, albeit with a refocus on its own timescale and what that now has to look like between now and then the next general election. So I think it's important for Ireland Plan still to be there. It's certainly still a government priority. And as the minister said, housing delivery is still absolutely critical. And how we then tie our public estate and reviews of our public estate into that. Again, it just is, it is very important work. So I don't foresee that there will be any lack of attention to that or any lack of detail in that area. I think it's just, again, it's, I guess, probably now working out administratively how we all go about getting political engagement, public engagement, and doing the work to make sure that we have the details ready for approval.
Do you, do you see housing standards as changing in any way as a result of COVID?
I think, I think the need to focus on housing standards is still there. I think we've, in another ministerial debate, obviously, we've, we've got the, the standards around public, sorry, private rented dwellings. And that's going to be coming back in, into debate later this year. So in my view, I think it's incumbent on us to make sure that the pressure to house persons isn't traded off with the standards for those persons to be housed. We still have an underlying need to focus on standards within our housing stock. But the critical need is to make sure we have more housing stock at a decent standard. I think that's, so I think the two dovetail together.
I suppose what I'm leading to is the fact that people have been compelled to stay locked into their houses, for want of a better word. Should we be looking to essential provision of outside areas, balcony areas and suchlike? So people have at least got some option to get out, which they certainly want.
Yeah, I think the last, the last two, two or so months have really shown a focus not just on internal spaces and how housing is used internally and what those, those spaces should be in terms of space standards. I think we'll, we'll see some challenges moving forward around homeworking and how that's reflecting in housing design moving forward. But I think it, again, just magnifies the fact that in some of our areas of the island, people's access to open space isn't as high and as great as we would want it to be. And I think for me, it's really important that we dovetail any housing delivery plan into a public realm and, and how we use our outdoor spaces plan. It is vital that people have access to, to public open space. And especially in the Greater St Helier area, where, you know, the statistics show that we need more, more focus on green areas and, and urban quality. So I think it's, you know, the Ireland Plan has got to answer that really important question as well.
I have a question, Mike, to follow.
Carry on.
Of course, well. And I would like to ask the minister. First of all, I'm absolutely behind that the housing delivery is critical for the wellbeing of the island. I would like to ask two questions. First question, I think we should have approximately seven hundred. I don't remember exact number. I would be happy if you let me know, delivering new homes within this year, by the end of this year, how the COVID situation has affected the delivery of the new homes?
And so I, I, I think it's not been too bad, to be perfectly honest. Certainly, the homes that our state-owned companies were, were scheduled to deliver. And the, the obvious one that was, was towards the end of its completion, when all of this kicked off, was one of the Hugh Court blocks, which has been able to go ahead, has been able to have people move into there, which has enabled us to free up capacity for emergency housing elsewhere. I have in front of me a list of all of those projects, which are, which are due to be completed over the next few years, the amounts of homes that includes, and, and when those completion dates are. And I'm happy to share that with the panel, if, if the panel are interested in that.
Thank you. That would be helpful.
Yeah.
Could I, could I ask a couple of questions, please?
Yes, please, Sadie. Go on.
Firstly, you, the new home that you're going to be building, are the rooms going to be sort of so tiny? That like they have been on properties that have been built on? Are they going to be of a decent size now? Because people have been living in like little rabbit hutches and it's been grossly unfair. Not only have they not had an outdoor space, which we're hopefully going to recommend and redeem ourselves by making, having an outdoor space, but they've also had these tiny little rooms. And is there anything you can put with planning to make sure that the rooms are a decent size? Because, you know, we know now that people have been stuck at home. I'm lucky, I've got, you know, a farm. But a lot of them have been stuck in with nothing, bless their hearts. And they've had the children too, which hasn't helped. I don't mean that disrespectfully, but they've had to sort of, you know, and, and it's just kind of a shame that they're living in, in rabbit hutches. So that's my first question, if I could have an answer to that, please.
And yeah, yes, you're absolutely right. That is a seriously important issue. It was important before the crisis, but obviously these restrictions, which have forced people to spend a lot more time in their homes than they otherwise might have liked to, has highlighted the importance of that. And I think there's, there's two points I'd make to that. The first, from, from our side, is that Andium has moved away from producing bedsits and focuses, for, for that part of the market, it now focuses on full one-bedroom properties, which is on the basis that when we have single people who, who need to live in social housing, that they do require space to, to live in and enjoy themselves. And, and one room where, you know, where you can't even have a friend round for a cup of tea and that sort of thing isn't good enough. And those people are entitled to that support. So as part of Andium's strategy, that has been a conscious attempt to improve conditions for people in that situation. But in terms of the future and delivery of homes, not just in the social sector, but in the private sector as well, the Ireland Plan will have to have those principles at its core. You know, what are, what are the standard of these homes going to be? And are they going to take into account the learning that has happened over these recent months about how people's living conditions affect their wellbeing and their health? From, from my early discussions with the Environment Minister, who ultimately is the one who leads on the Ireland Plan, I've certainly picked up that he's very conscious of, of these issues. He's said things to me off the record about things he's considering that I'd prefer to let him talk about rather than me. But he has privately raised some suggestions with me that show that the issue of size and amenity space is something that is on his list of considerations. So, so I'm hopeful that when the Ireland Plan comes forward and sets out what those future requirements will be for new homes, that we're building homes that are fit for people to live in and have a decent and happy life. Frankly, because I think we owe it to them after going through this very difficult time.
No, that's lovely. Thank you very much, Senator. And my other question is for you, sorry about this. It's just that you mentioned Hugh Court just now. And that's, it's been, there's been a little bit of controversy about Hugh Court and everybody was moved out for medical staff, they thought. So you said it's back online and then it's being used. And then you also said it's freed up homes. So was it for medical people or have you put non-medical staff in Hugh Court at this moment?
No, it, it's still for key workers. And what, what we were able to do is we were able to take key workers out of homes that they were in, that, that they were already in. So for example, there were homes in Convent Court that key workers were living in. Very, very nice homes that were refurbished to a very decent standard. And we were able to move those people into Hugh Court, which meant that Place on Court, Convent Court now called Place on Court.
Yes.
And I keep forgetting as well. They, they, that now, we were able to work with the homelessness charities to use some of those homes, which then became empty, as emergency housing, which has been our focus for the last few months. And that, that gave us capacity, which has been really helpful. Because if, if Hugh Court hadn't been able to, to be completed and key workers weren't able to enter there, then we just wouldn't have had that extra number of homes to help vulnerable islanders.
That's lovely. Thank you so very, very much for that honest answer.
Chairman, I had a second question that I didn't ask. It's to the minister. I'm going back to the recovery and government plan. And as we know, according to the forecast, we'll be missing hundred, in excess of hundred million. And I know that all, we all know that all departments being sent to look where the cuts can be made. And I understand that probably your department as well, department under your remit, been asked where it can be made or maybe to do different prior authorisation. Maybe something will go into 2021 or 2022, whatever has been planned for 20. So is it anything that you're, in your department, under your remit, will be think deliver in later day and will be postponed, the delivery will be postponed?
So at this point, nothing is set in stone for that. But it is the case that throughout the last few months, a lot of the policy development work has simply not been able to happen because policy officers were redirected to, to COVID response measures, which was absolutely right. But, but it does mean that some work that otherwise would have been done has literally, in some cases, had, had nothing done on it. And so.
Can you please give an examples of this policy work that hasn't been done? Which is understandable, but to understand which one we are delaying.
Well, the biggest one from my part was the Housing Policy Development Board report, which was meant to be finalised and published in April. And that did not happen because firstly, because that was throughout some of the worst parts of the restrictions, which meant getting people in a room together was really difficult and, and not conducive to an environment where we'd be able to have the, the important discussions on that finalisation. And also because we were worried that we might end up producing a piece of work that looked great for the pre-COVID world, but not, not necessarily built for the post-COVID world. Because parts of the recommendations that were likely to have come out of that process were going to be on capital projects in terms of building new homes. And so that has been delayed. I think we're hoping to go for September now. And some of those proposals on building homes will just have to be altered to take into account the, the context, where, you know, where the Ireland Plan will be sitting by then, what access to funding that we will need for building new homes. So, so that's a key, obvious one that has been delayed because of that.
Going on to, literally to that, is how have Andium and Jersey Home Trust been affected? Has, have they had to alter their business plans to, as a result of COVID-19? In your experience to date?
Business operations have, have obviously had to be altered. Many staff for both Jersey Homes Trust and Andium having to work from home and do things a little bit differently to how they were before. And obviously, that also means that their interaction with their tenants has been different. There's been some stuff that wasn't able to, to be continued, like some of the face-to-face meetings that they were having beforehand, stuff where they may have done visits to people's homes to discuss things have had to be done over the phone, et cetera, instead. In terms of maintenance and that sort of thing, they have had to suspend much of their non-essential maintenance works, which is obviously a cause for concern because you want to keep up your maintenance and make sure your properties are kept in a decent standard. And so there, I think, was a bit of a worry that an effect of that could be some homes falling into a standard which we don't consider to be acceptable. But just from experience so far, it doesn't look like that has happened. Certainly, certainly for Andium anyway, from what they've reported to us. They were allowed to continue to carry on essential maintenance, obviously doing so within safety guidelines. And so, and so they have continued to do that. And they, they also weren't able to sell homes that they were due to sell during lockdown period, which again, they might have worried about cash flow because of that. But again, they're reporting to us that that hasn't turned out to be too bad. And the, I think the most significant change that certainly I've witnessed from Andium's delivering its operations were the fantastic way that they allocated resource and manpower to supporting the emergency housing team, which was put together at the start of this process, where they have been working side by side with my officers, with officers from the Housing Gateway as part of one team to try and come up with bespoke solutions for people when they faced emergency situations. And so obviously, we worked closely with them before this. But in, in that sort of team arrangement, not so much. But they absolutely without hesitation were prepared to, to offer resource and manpower to that, which we're incredibly grateful for.
Thank you. The Affordable Housing Gateway report, I presume, is linked to the Housing Policy Development Board report and would be, will, will be delayed. Do you anticipate a long delay on that as well?
And so that report itself is not connected to the Housing Policy Development Board in that it was, in that it was started before that process. And I had, it had produced a report, it had made recommendations and I'd responded to those recommendations. And we had started to, started to look at the development of, of some of the things that it was talking about. The Gateway itself has more or less been suspended through the last few months, where the focus has purely been on emergency housing cases, which, which doesn't necessarily correspond with the banding system. And so the, the operation of the Gateway has, has been different because of that. There were things in that report, recommendations for changes to the Housing Gateway that we, we still anticipate we want to make. Like, for example, handing over the management of the affordable purchase part of the Gateway to Andium. Because Andium are, are the leader on this anyway, and they do a really good job and they've got the expertise. But we've not been working on drawing up an agreement with them to do that service because we've been so focused on other things. So, so that, that sort of thing will be delayed. And they, they had also recommended in that report establishing a housing advice service. And that was something we were in the really, really early stages of in terms of developing before the crisis hit. And very little has practically gone on, on that whilst people have been diverted elsewhere. But the experience of running the emergency housing team has, has presented its, presented itself with, with some opportunities to learn about what that service may look like when it is set up. So at this point, I'm not a hundred percent sure what the timeline is for that. We'd hoped to have that delivered and in place by the end of this year, but that, that may well be unlikely.
Yeah, I understand. Moving on to new affordable housing sites, which will need to be identified in the next Ireland Plan scheme, what additional actions will you take to support affordable home ownership for households who can't access appropriate housing in the open market?
And so I, it's been one of my perpetual nightmares in this job, has been pushing for states-owned sites to be fully handed over to our housing providers. But predominantly Andium, but not just Andium. I know the trusts are really keen to play their part as well. To get full agreement that where we've got a site that we know is perfect for housing, that we're not using to capacity right now or even using at all, to just get that agreement that we can hand it over and then Andium can get on with it or one of our housing trusts can get on with it and deliver homes on there. That, that can be extremely difficult sometimes because of the politics. The, the biggest example of that in this term of office was the Anne Court issue, where, you know, a perfect site for housing, but some people had a different idea for what it could be used for. And that is still a problem with some other sites. The, the obvious one for me is the St Saviour's Hospital site, which is, in my view, a terrible location for a hospital, but a brilliant location for housing. And unfortunately, there are people who have the precise opposite view to me on that. So, so it can be difficult getting the ink on the paper, the sign on the dotted line to approve those transfers. And I, I continue to push for that. But hopefully, what the next part of the government plan will present us with is because of the difficulties there will be with public finances and, and government spending on, on various things. Having sites that we know are costing us money to maintain, but which we're not getting best use out of, will hopefully be an extra incentive to get rid of those sites. So we're not having to spend money on the maintenance of them and instead handing it to, to an agency which is prepared to roll their sleeves up and get some homes for people to live in, built on them. So that's what I keep pushing for.
I'm sure the Connaughtons and Savior would like to see something happening at St Saviour's Hospital.
Yes, I would. And providing it has a school and shops around there to stop people from having to travel all the way through, through St Saviour's, I'd be absolutely thrilled. Something needs to be done.
Absolutely, Constable. And I, I, I give my, my commitment to you that if, if the future of that site is to be, is to fall within my remit, rather than a hospital being, being built on it, then I absolutely commit to consulting with you and your team to make sure that the community's voice is at the heart of that process.
Well, it mightn't be me because I, because you'll have to push this through in two years because I'm not standing again. But as long as there's a school and to stop people from travelling for too far, I'm sure you would have the backing of whoever comes after me, my sweetheart.
Thank you, Sadie.
In terms of affording affordable housing supply, you mentioned you'll send us a, a list of what is going on. But clearly, Samray Nurseries is in build. Where are we with that at the moment? Do you have a timeline on that?
Yes, so, so phases one and two have already been delivered. That included fifteen for first-time buyers and eighty-six for rental. I, I don't know if they're 100% sold and rented at this point, but they're, they're certainly close to it. And we were very lucky that some of those came online in the early stages of this crisis, which meant that some of those homes were able to be used for emergency moves, which, which was very helpful. And, and I know that people have been. And and I know that people have been buying those homes and I've seen some very very. Lovely pictures of families standing outside the front doors with the keys, who were really, really pleased that that opportunity was there for them. So Phase Three continues. So that's to deliver purely for rental homes as part of that phase. Which will largely be two bedroom apartments, but there will be some three bedroom houses. And a small number of one bedroom apartments as well. That is due for completion in August of this year. So looking good at this point, but but if there are any delays for whatever reason, then we can we can make that clear.
Similarly, have we got movement on Anne Street, the Anne Street Brewery site, Summerland and Robin Hood sites?
So the the Robin Hood site is due for completion at the end of this year. Those are that's for five three bedroom houses, which will all be for rental. Which is important because that is an area that that we do we do need more three bedroom homes. Summerland is not due for completion till the final quarter of next year. And that is a combination. Of of rental and first time buyers, but predominantly for rental. The Anne Street Brewery site, that that is still quite a long way off. And that's not due for completion until the beginning of 2024. That's a very significant project and I've when I've been involved in discussing. Potential for consideration as to what exactly goes in that plot. You know, we can provide lots of homes on there, which would be great. But there have also been some discussions about what green space we can provide on that on that land. There was. Some ideas of providing. It which is slightly difficult to imagine, but but some sort of like woodland sort of feature there because we've got open. Open parks nearby, but something a little bit different in terms of green space could be there. There have also been some considerations about amenity facilities, community facilities there as well. Which aren't aren't quite. Aren't quite decided at this point, but there's still a lot of time before that project requires. Space to go in the ground and for the current parts of it to be demolished. So. Still still a long way to go on that one, but but it's a significant site, so a lot of attention is going to it.
Would you would you suggest that perhaps in the light of the pandemic and different requirements specifically specifically with regard to open. Space within the units, that the plans may need to be revised. So that maybe we should be moving away from amenity facilities, which we haven't been able to use recently, more to more open space within the units themselves. I don't know, Andy, if you've got any thoughts with your planning background on that.
Yeah, certainly. I think that one of the key bits of guidance we're waiting for. Via policy at the moment is the sort of new residential space standards and parking guidelines. So that that work was progressing pre Covid. That that talks about space standards both internally and externally around residential property. So. I I do think it's a very live debate and one of the things we need to do. In in the wash up and review of what Covid has meant for us is is to look at those sort of standards inside properties and what the future of them. Should be in terms of, as I've mentioned, homeworking previously, but. Some some people have been able to homework relatively easily because of space within their properties, but but some haven't and. I think what we we will see is a sort of demand for more flexible houses whereby. You you can have study areas, you can have eating areas, you can have things things such as that. So. That that's a key bit, but I think the key thing sort of practically is to look at the housing space standards that. The the Environment Minister is due to publish.
Thank you. Moving on to key workers and their access to accommodation. That was identified in the report of last year. Once again, with the impact of Covid, obviously a factor in attracting or be able to retain these key workers. Are you and perhaps in the light of fewer key workers being here at the moment and maybe a change in the future. What are you doing with regard to mitigating that that demand for their accommodation?
So some of the practical things that we were getting on with anyway, in terms of delivering key worker accommodation. Hugh Court, I mentioned before, being the obvious example there, haven't really been affected. But but it is the case that the policy development on this has pretty much ground to a halt. Because of policy officers being being diverted to other areas as well. And so there were. Bits of work that were being done alongside the Housing Policy Development Board report work. That that again have sort of ground to a halt that, you know, there were things we needed to do in terms of. Having a a a clear statement on what constitutes a key worker. Because key workers aren't always. Employed directly by the government, they can be contractors as well. And some of that will would have required changes in legislation to deliver the concept of key worker accommodation in our. Wider housing office wider housing offer. And a working group was working on some of these issues, but that that has slowed down and it hasn't recommenced at this point.
The clearly, there's been an inability for key workers to come into the island on a regular basis. Is this giving us a chance, shall we say, to take a a deep breath on how we approach. Essential these into the key workers. And actually, what the if the need is as genuine as originally thought, what are your views? Do you have any views on key workers?
So I mean, within that definition of key worker, that obviously features lots of different types of jobs. And the ones which I'm most closely connected to are the jobs in children's services, social workers, et cetera. And it is the case that people in those sorts of jobs have had to work differently. But my my ambition on. On the on the children's side for those key worker positions was to reduce our reliance on agency staff. And aim to have a more permanent workforce, and that's a permanent workforce in Jersey. With Jersey as their home, Jersey as the community which they know and understand. And that that will. Part of that work involved on island training to support people to get those qualifications to work in those services. And those will be Jersey people who may well have no need for key worker. Accommodation support because they may be young people who. Were already renting in the private sector and were perfectly happy with that. It might be people who were still living with their family whilst they saved up for a. Deposit on the open market and were happy with that. Or or had a local partner as well who who they were living with and that was fine. So so that can reduce the reliance on a key worker accommodation offer because it's just. You know, ordinary Jersey people who are who are happy with what they have. Or to bring people from outside the island to take on these permanent positions in Jersey, which means establishing residence in Jersey. And so we would have to. Provide different offers to them in terms of. Landing accommodation, so somewhere they've got to be able to move in when they first arrive here and know that they can live there for six months or whatever. And then find their own housing and that will be in the private sector and and they can they can do that and be perfectly happy with that. And and also thinking about other other incentives as well for more permanent housing offers to them. But as I said, you can reduce the. Reliant the reliance on a key worker accommodation offer with a more stable workforce. And with better on island training opportunities, which are all things that we're looking at. But it is always going to be the case that from time to time we'll need to bring people from outside the island and giving them a helping hand with their housing. Situation is fundamental to making sure we get the best people.
Yes, thank you for that. Going to social housing, 90% rent policy. This was adopted by the States in 2013. And with a likely effect of private rentals declining. How will that adjust the policy review, do you think?
So as in my my policy review that that was going on. Well, I I think, I mean, I mean, my my position on that policy is well known in that I'm not a supporter of it and want to see an alternative to it. And work was going on with that and the Housing Policy Development Board was due to say something about it. The homelessness review was also due to say something about it. So so that that remains an agenda item. But the delivery of it is still up in the air a little bit because we don't quite know where we sit with the next part of the government plan. And in any event. So so some of the policy work there hasn't gone on recently. You you referred to the likely effect of bringing down rental costs. I really hope you're right, and that is an effect of of this crisis. If that does have an effect on bringing down rental. Prices, then hallelujah, I I'll be pleased with that. And of course, if if that then has an impact on reducing, you know, average rent levels. Then it is the case that our social housing providers. The rule they have to abide by is that they can charge up to 90% of the market rate, not above it. And so if they undertake their analyses of their of the rents they're charging and making sure that those rents are in line with policy. And it turns out the rents are above 90% because the market rate has gone down, then they have to adjust accordingly because that's what the policy is.
Who would monitor this? I mean, they will undertake. Is it anybody from the government side will monitor, undertake and just check on them?
Not formally, they have their internal procedures for doing that and I know I know Andium uses external expertise to help them work out. That they're doing the right thing and that that system in itself. I I don't see any problems with it. It appears to be okay to me, but what I would undertake to do is if. If we get signs that. Signs of what the impact on rental costs are because of the crisis. And then I would, I think, be be very keen to speak to those housing providers and say. You'll have noticed this is going on. I would like you to explain to me how you're responding to it and provide me with confidence that. That they're doing that they're doing what they need to be doing.
Thank you. Are you expecting an increase in homelessness, shall we say, either now or after? Shall we say the freezes we presently have until the 30th of September come to a conclusion? And how far have you got with the greater coordination of work between the agencies involved in the provision of accommodation and housing related support?
So this, so an emergency housing team was set up at the outset of this and they have been working extremely hard. Trying to support people facing those emergency situations and those situations. Lots of those are situations which. It may, you know, some of it has been people who've been returning to Jersey from outside the island. And have needed to self isolate and therefore could not have gone to the accommodation that otherwise they could have gone to when they arrived here. So. That's an example of of something that wouldn't have been an issue before, but has been an issue because of this. And people who have presented themselves to us who have been in homes which are unsafe. For whatever reason, whether that's to do with the quality of the property or because of. Living with vulnerable people, having to shelter and and that sort of thing. So so a huge amount of work has gone to trying to. To support those cases. And working with other agencies has been a fundamental part of that. The housing providers themselves and also the charities and Shelter Trust and Women's Refuge in particular. And we've been trying to increase capacity for them. So that so that they can provide their support to more people. That that has been a real learning curve going through that process because. We did not have our homelessness review complete at the beginning of this crisis. And it's only very recently that I've had a a draft copy of the report which has been produced. For that, which which I don't think has been signed off yet and and is not not ready for publication. So. So we had a review going on and then a crisis thrown into the mix that we weren't expecting that has forced us to act and forced us to act. Without necessarily. Having a longer term. Position ready yet. So that means that there are issues we're going to have to think about. As the health crisis starts to diminish. And we still have an economic crisis, there are still going to be people for whom homelessness is going to be an issue for them. At some point, courts will be allowed to start processing evictions. And those may not be evictions that are anything to do with coronavirus. They may be to do with completely different things. There will be people who have incurred incurred debts during this time and are going to struggle to afford housing. I'm particularly concerned about people who don't have. Five years residency or or 10 years residency, who have suffered during this period and for whom that's going to be difficult. And so that's why I said in the States debate yesterday and the day before. That the whole government has to continue to provide support to people so they don't face destitution, so they don't face homelessness. Because it's difficult providing them with solutions. Particularly when supply is an issue. And so we're keen to not step down that emergency housing team. When it's deemed that the health part of this crisis has has dissipated. I think we know that at least a version of that service has to continue into the future. And we need to start thinking about how we can evolve that into something that will meet the needs of people when. Some of the protections that are in place now fall away. Or when people start suffering from the economic crisis or start suffering worse from the economic crisis that we're facing. So it it's going to be difficult. I I think we've reacted very well. Up until this point and people have worked very hard to find innovative solutions to difficult cases. But it it is still going to be a big issue over the coming months and and that's why we've got to be vigilant.
Yeah, I'm. It has been reported that the increase of almost 30%. Of people who use the Shelter Trust services and Shelter Trust indicated that as. Job loss, marriage breakups, financial issues, eviction, you added. Will definite we will definitely see increase in people with homeless, people without home. And it's short term. We don't have time to develop the policy. Policy will be postponed because of the reasons that you mentioned. What plans do we have in the short term for the next two, three, six months to address this issue on practical level?
Okay, so so I'd mentioned that we'd worked to increase capacity for the for the homelessness charities, so. They themselves have got the ability to support more people than they were able to support before. And part of that is because of the direct support that government's been able to facilitate there. One. One thing we have done, which in some people's eyes is controversial, is that we have not yet. is that we have not yet restarted ordinary home moves under the housing gateway. So, so when the health advice came through that it was unsafe for people to move homes, we just suspended the gateway and we were only dealing with emergency cases. The health advice has now changed and, and it says that home moves are now allowed provided they're done under the safety guidelines. So in the private sector, they're, they've returned to allowing people to move home. We haven't done that in the social sector yet. It is the case that we are not processing ordinary housing gateway moves, even though the health advice says to us that it is theoretically safe to do so. We have chosen to not do that yet so that our focus remains on emergency cases. So we don't end up making a backlog of emergency cases worse because we're simultaneously trying to deal with the day to day business. So, so we've, we've tried to stop that. And that will upset some people because there are people who are living in homes at the moment that are not ideal for them. But they are living in a home, they are safe and they'll, and they'll continue to be safe. It just won't necessarily be what's ideal for their situation. So we've had to say, you know, sorry for now, we're not going to be focusing on that. It is purely those who are facing homelessness or who may be unsafe otherwise. So, so that is our focus now and it will be until we feel that it is okay and safe to start returning to business as usual.
And I would like to follow the comment that you made about difficulties and challenges to deal with people who lost their homes from various reasons, if they're under five or even under ten years. And Minister, when I'm aware about several cases that was very challenging to resolve because the available property on the market for unqualified is limited and they don't have access to the social housing. So they fell somewhere in the middle. What are plans to address this issue? If any, I understand that it's really, really difficult and it's on different levels. But this brought in light the seriousness of the situations.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. And it's, it's one of the reasons that I hate our housing qualifications system. I, I, it just, it does not sit well on my conscience that people are treated differently based on how long they've lived in the island. I, I just, I just think there's moral issues with that system. But it is the system we've got and it has caused problems through the last few months. There, in terms of people that have come to the emergency housing team for support, some without housing qualifications have, have been more difficult to solve because they don't have housing qualifications than others who may have been able to be housed in social housing and dealt with in a relatively more simple way. So we put out a call for landlords and letting agents who have unqualified accommodation to get in touch with us. And, and, and we will basically work with them to get them tenants to go and live in, in the homes they've got in these emergency circumstances. I couldn't tell you off the top of my head what the take up was like on that. But we, we did try to increase supply. But as I know, you're well aware, it's a very, very difficult issue.
Is it any changes on the policy level would Minister suggest or bring forward?
Well, if, if I had my way, then, then we wouldn't have this discriminatory system in the first place. So, I mean, I'm, I'm aware of some cases where some leeway was able to be given to get people into homes. And there are ways that that can be done through the population office. But they're, they're not standard and they're not easy to do either. I, I hope that this experience demonstrates that access to housing is a fundamental human right. And we do need a better system than the qualification system, which can make it difficult. It's, it's not an area of work that I'm extremely involved in. But the obviously Population Policy Development Board, looking at alternatives for an immigration system could present us with opportunities where there can be more equality in the housing market for people who live in the island. But, but that ultimately falls under other ministers' remits.
Okay, and the last point. First of all, Minister, I would like to thank you and your team for who operate emergency accommodation because they are, were extremely, were extremely still helpful with dealing with private cases. And the last question, what lessons have been learned through these two months operation of the emergency accommodation teams?
Well, the first lesson is to echo the first point you've made, which is that the people who work here are absolutely brilliant, who really go above and beyond and have a creativity that enables them to come up with innovative solutions sometimes. And also there were agencies outside of government that were very generous in terms of getting in contact with us to try and provide what support they could when they had homes that were able to be used. So that was a sort of nice thing to, to be reminded of through this. I think the, the primary lesson to learn from it is that to deal with some of these issues, you do require a mobilization of resource to, to be able to help these people. And the, the business as usual framework we had beforehand of having a, on the government side, having a housing gateway and on the charity side, having some homelessness shelters. It is not good enough that there is a requirement for clearer working together and partnerships between different agencies and a dedication of resource to that to actually make it happen and have somewhere where people who need help can go to, to get that help. So I, I mentioned the homelessness review that was going on and that I've seen a, a draft report. I'm not exactly sure what the timescale is at this point, but I hope that a, a report will be able to be presented at some point in the near future, which will suggest ways in which that working can be done in the future so that we can help people who need it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Minister. The COVID nineteen temporary arrangements rental tenants has simulated enhanced guidance being produced, which is now published on the government website. Whilst landlords are being pressed to make more concessions in terms of not being able to evict tenants and holding down rent levels, they are also being asked to contribute more in, in the terms of licensing. How will you balance the needs of tenants with the need of landlords? And I appreciate there are lots of landlords, lots of different backgrounds, with the need of them to make a living?
I mean, if I could sum up my philosophy on this in, in one sentence, and some people will shriek with horror as they hear this. But my philosophical view is that housing is a human right. Making a profit out of housing is not a human right. And so my focus is on delivering what I think will enable as many people as possible to have decent access to housing so that they can live a happy life. And I'm not particularly concerned about seeing changes on the market and investment side of that, which may well see changes in how housing is, housing in the private sector is delivered. And there may well be some changes which some people who are currently invested in that market find inconvenient. And I, if I were being glib about it, I might suggest that perhaps other investment opportunities may be more appropriate for them because the primary purpose of our housing market is delivering homes for people, not bending over backwards to meet the needs of investors if their interests are diametrically opposed to the interests of people who need homes.
Would you agree that we need the private sector to produce rental homes to complement what's being produced by Andium and the various other bodies? Would we survive without them? And should they be encouraged in any way, notwithstanding a need to make, to cover their costs, if you like? I'm not suggesting they need to make an enormous profit, but to complement our, complement our housing provision offering? Do we need to be encouraging them in the same way?
To produce homes, absolutely. And of course, it's the case that our, our social housing providers do engage the services of the private sector to deliver the production of those homes. But there's a difference between producing a new home and acquiring a home which already exists and letting it out, that they are very different services. And I think sometimes the two services get linked together in a way which is inappropriate. There are plenty of different models of rental markets around the world which look, which look very, very different to each other and what we've got here. And, and I personally don't shy away from seeing changes in the letting of private sector properties, which is why I've been a staunch supporter of the licensing scheme, which I think puts us on a better footing for professionalizing private sector landlord services and improving the quality of homes. And I know some people are, are resentful of the fact they may have to pay a fee to be a part of that system. But I think that it's not really too much to ask that landlords who are providing access to homes, which are a fundamental human right, ought to pay a fee to have the rights to take part in that market when currently there are greater fees for running an ice cream van than there are for being a landlord.
Thank you indeed. I, I think there is a, I don't think there's much doubt about the fact there's need for a registration system and the panel is dealing with that in a, in a different place. I think what I'm keen to hear is that there is enthusiasm and support for encouraging private landlords to remain in the market, provided their profit aspirations are reasonable and acceptable to what government might expect. Would you agree with that sentiment?
Encouragement is not the word I'd use, to be perfectly honest. It's, it's an opportunity that's out there for people to take advantage of if they are able to, if it's appropriate for them. But if an individual chooses to leave the market because they, they just don't like the outlook of it at a given point, they can very easily be replaced by, by another investor or, or housing provider that will be able to do just as good a job. So, so to be perfectly honest, I don't think it's my job as Housing Minister to, to encourage investors in that way. I think it's my job to encourage a delivery system which meets the needs of people who, who own homes. And that doesn't necessarily mean coming up with policies to make the investment attractive. If I think that there are other ways of doing it, which will be just as good at, at delivering those homes for people. You know, I wouldn't expect a health minister to say it's their job to make private sector healthcare provision an attractive investment. Their focus should be on access to healthcare, which won't necessarily mean encouraging private sector investors who, to be perfectly honest, in most cases, don't need the government to be encouraging them. They'll just get on with it and do what's right for them.
Yes, I suppose put in a different way, would you suggest that it is for government to provide a framework within which private landlords should work to enable them to complement the supply of housing units in our marketplace where there is clearly a shortage?
And yes, I think we found a form of words we can both agree on, yes.
Great, that's good. Sadie?
Sorry, just a couple of things because you do have a very difficult job, Senator, and I quite understand that. Do you not think that we had an immigration law that would help stem the population coming into the island? Would be fair for everybody? We seem to have an open door policy to allow everybody in. But when the poor souls get here, they don't have a job or they don't have a home. And a job is always available. I'm sorry, there is always work somewhere along the line. But the homes are not so easily come by. Do you not think if we had a proper immigration policy, it would help your situation?
Yeah, absolutely. I think, and this, you, you've made the point here, but also Deputy Gardner made this point as well, that there, there are lots of difficulties within the current framework in terms of making sure there are enough decent homes for everybody to live in and making sure people have got access. And at the same time, making sure that we've got the right skills we need in Jersey to work in our economy and services. And that's why I've always supported moving towards a population policy that makes sure that we do have control over how people are moving to the island and the terms on which they're moving to the island to make sure that we can focus on those areas where we do need immigration for, for particular areas. But ensuring that we are able to deliver housing, school places, the size of our healthcare provision, et cetera, everything that means people will have a good quality of life when they're here. I, I, in the past, have spoken about some of the virtues of the Guernsey system, which I know is not a fashionable thing for a Jersey politician to do. But I think that some of the early stuff that the Population Policy Development Board came up with resembled some of the good stuff that, that they have in Guernsey that have enabled them to not suffer from the housing shortage in the way that we have. So, yes, it, it's, it's a really important area that would make my job a lot easier and more importantly, make life a lot easier for people out there in our community. But it, it's an extremely difficult political issue. And I, I hope that those for who this political responsibility falls in their remit will get back on track as soon as possible. So as a, as a States of Jersey, we can deal with it.
Whilst you're on about people's remit, do you not think that it would be much easier if we trained local people to do some of the jobs that we wouldn't have to import? There are always going to have to be people that we have to import. I'm not that cuckoo. But there are jobs that could be done by locals and, but they just don't have the training or if they have the training, they're bypassed. Do you not, so when you went to one of your council meetings, have a go to whoever the powers that be are and say, you know, do you not think we could look local? And most of them would have homes anyway. Or some of these youngsters who are locals and can't get homes would have a chance of being able to stay in the island where they were born to have a home?
Yeah, and I mean, I mentioned earlier on that there's a couple of areas where we've made some good progress on that in terms of nursing and social work, where we do now have on island training facilities. I know some of the young people who have been through the nurse training, you know, have, have just been over, over the moon at having that opportunity. And it's great for our island as well to have people in Jersey have those opportunities for such a vital part of, of our public service. And I, I think that through the, that, that with the Economic Recovery Programme that will come is clear that there will have to be a decent emphasis on skills, not just education for young people, but also lifelong learning for people who at a certain point in their career may want to change career or may have to change career because the nature of their job has changed or it's become obsolete or something like that. And so rather than, you know, it's, it's quite funny how two of the biggest problems we face as a society is that, number one, we've got loads of things that need to be done. And number two, we've got loads of people who aren't doing anything. Those, those, those are two problems that actually with a, with a bit of, a bit of creative thinking, hopefully could solve themselves. And if we can direct people through education and training, then we build up those skills on islands and we don't then have to be as reliant on people coming into the island and us having to make up for that with more, more homes, more places in schools, more hospitals, et cetera, which can be difficult to do on a small island. et cetera, which can be difficult to do on a small island.
Thank you.
Agreed. You know, anything more from you?
Thank you.
Minister and your team, thank you very much for presenting to us today. We appreciate what you've said and I'm grateful, Minister, you're always fully abreast of your brief.
Yes, he is fabulous. Thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And thank you for the work you're doing.
Right, Liz?
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye, thank you.
Thank you, Tim.